To go in at the elementary school with the construction project for the elementary school set to break ground here towards the end of August. We are working on finding that new spot and location for that north playground. Currently, right now, if you've driven past the high school lot, those aren't vent pipes out in the high school parking lot. Those are tubes for the slides that are going to be on the new playground equipment. So that's what is stationed in the high school parking lot. Last week was a bid closing for our south parking lot at the elementary school as part of our traffic study that we had done a year and a half ago. And due to some pretty big fault lines, I'll say, in the south parking lot and the hard surface play area on the south side of the elementary school, bids came in last week for those. And as part of that bid project, we're also looking at adding a, an exit only lane from that, from that south parking lot. So we don't have cars coming in and exiting out of the same area. And that was within that traffic study that we had. And then another part that we're going to do within that same bid is to widen the exit of the north playground. Because if you've tried to drive into that north playground, not the north playground, but the north parking lot at the end of the school day or when cars are going back and forth, it's narrow. It wasn't supposed to be that narrow, but it is that narrow. And so that's part of the whole bid project with that south parking lot as well. The pool heating and the piping is almost, we almost have somebody here to do that. And that's just some warranty work because last year, when some of that, the installation happened, there was an installation error. It's still heated last year, but the reverse of all of that is corroding some of the pipes. And so those are getting fixed, which is why before the heat wave this past week, that the pool was slowly warming up. But that work should be done here shortly. We've had some contact with some community members and I've made some phone calls to some, some community partners that have shared some concerns and I've shared that with them as well. So I know in, in having the conversation, and I, I won't say her last name, but with Mary, Mary did say that she was going to reach out to the other people that are at the pool and she was going to inform them that we were aware of it and going through that. This one last item here as, you know, one of the things that are important to our school district, the Joint Committee on Finance and the K-12 budget proposals of the state started to come through. And now, now obviously these are proposals, but some of the things that were getting talked about heavily going into the biennium budget didn't transpire the way that we thought they were necessarily going to transpire going through that. Specifically around a couple of areas, special education aid. And with any questions with this, Sean will be more than happy, you know, to help out with this as well. The reimbursement rate for general aid for special education, there was a thought that that was going to increase to possibly 60% from the current 35% due to the, the surplus that's down at, in Madison. But they're saying that's only going to go up to 37 and a half percent. And high cost special education will be funded at 50% and 90% with those respective years to come. That's kind of a false positive, just based upon, number one, there are very few schools, school districts around the state that do have high cost special ed because there's not that much money in high cost special ed. It's only amounts to a couple of thousand dollars for us. So, you know, on the surface, a 90% reimbursement rate for high cost special ed might seem like a really good thing, but when you're talking, I think this last year we were at like 14, $1,500. You know, going into the next year, we're looking at maybe $2,000. So when you talk about 90% reimbursement for that, it's kind of a, a blanket false positive, you know, shield that's getting tossed out there as far as those things go. Another thing that we, we need to pay close attention to is the general aids with per pupil aid. So in the past, for the past couple of years, we got, we've received a $325 per pupil increase. And that's just come from the state budget where it didn't fall on taxpayers or the community to support that. This year and for upcoming years, as it's written right now in the budget or proposed, that that 325 per pupil increase and for our school district, that $325 per student amounts to about $585,000. Within the revenue limit, within the revenue limit, that would be funded entirely through local property taxes. So instead of that being a reimbursement that we would get from the state, we would have to collect that from our taxpayers. So obviously there's a story to tell in this with us just recently passing a recurring operational referendum, with us just passing a capital referendum, and now with any of this reimbursement or the per pupil allocations being funded through local property taxes, that's an awful lot. So if this comes to fruition, that's a story that Sean and I will make sure that we get in the front of and go tell because that's something that as a school district, you know, we don't, what we can control is how much we decide to levy, essentially what it is. So it, this is, this is another thing where it might look like something good for the district, but in reality, it's going to be our taxpayers paying for that. And so that just might mean that when we come to having our annual meeting, that something like that, we may have to talk about, you know, whether we want to levy that or not. So there'll be some bigger decisions that fall on all of your shoulders as it comes to that. And Sean and I will make sure that we share some of those things out as well. Is any thoughts, questions?
How is the high cost special education defined differently from regular special ed? Either one of you?
Yep. Well, high cost special ed is more of those students that you get from either within your district that have special needs or different educational functions. So if we have a few students that may end up needing deaf and hearing and extra that need to be sent off to a private educational institution, those pieces could be claimed by us because they've exceeded a certain threshold, which the threshold is about 60,000 for the students. You still get adable funding off of that, which is, you know, as Ryan alluded, you know, 35% of it's going to come in '25, '26. Currently, it's 32% off of your previous year's expenditures. So we're almost two years in arrears based off of some of the funding that we get from the Department of Public Instruction. But these students are, these are not your normal population of your special education students that you have on a regular basis. So that's where the 35% covers those portions of it. And if you think about your property taxes, $2.6 million is related to the general fund obligation to fill the special education gap, to make that budget whole within our district. So that's a huge transfer for us. If it would have went up to 60%, that would have been a $1.2 million savings for the district. And then those questions when it came up when we started talking about how much we levy towards the upcoming school year. But at this point, you know, you're, you're looking at, you're making 32 cents on the dollar to fund special education is what the state is covering for you. And now they're going to take it to 35 cents. That'd be a hard business plan for most people who, who can relate to that.
I think another thing that's important to note here is when we were having our listening sessions and whatnot last fall about the amount of money that our district, you know, for us, that gives to, you know, choice or charter school programs. I think that was an eye-opening experience for most of the people to realize the amount of money in which, you know, our taxpayers of the West Salem School District did go to those chores, those choice or charter private programs. Last year, I think it was somewhere around $635,000, give or take. So another proposal that is in this upcoming state budget, it includes an increase in those per pupil payments for private school or choice start charter programs. And these increases would include an additional $135 per person or per pupil for the '25, '26. In addition, an additional $128 in the '26, '27, on top of the $325 revenue limit adjustment, just like our people or just like we would get for any student here that was going to come from taxpayers. So when you, you know, just doing some quick math here, that's 465, $460 of taxable allocations for charter private programs that would come from our taxpayers to go pay for a student that resides in our school district that would go to a choice or charter private program. So I think those are just important things to make sure that, you know, Sean and I continue to communicate some of those things out if this would come. So when you look at that, the tug back and forth, you know, I don't want to get caught in the, you know, a battle of, you know, private or, or public schools because our job as a community is to educate our kids. But I think it's important that we, that we let people know and are clear of where that money is going and that, you know, if you are a taxpayer in the West Salem School District, you're not just paying for public schools, you're also paying for the private school charter as well. Sean, if you want to add anything to that.
Yeah, so the, what we currently have is about 51 students that are a part of the private school and the choice program. The state a year ago made a huge investment by giving a large figure to each group. And what I mean by each group is there's a K through eight and a nine through 12, which are two different revenue limits for the schools, for the private school. Plus also they, an acceptance of special education students that they can accept, that, that they're willing to accept, which was a large portion, as large investment to the private school as compared to the public school. And I think as you go back to some of the locals, it, it feels a little one-sided because the same investment was not given to the public schools as it was the private. So that's part of the argument. And Ryan is correct, it'll be about $650,000 next year if all that changes. But also keep in mind for '26, '27, right now, the private schools are capped at a certain percentage of what your students are, 10%. So if we have 1,800 students, they can take no more than 180. In '26, '27, the caps come off for all school districts. So there is no cap portion. So that, that will be a potentially higher number of students for private schools, depending on where you live. And then also as far as receiving voucher programs, there was an income limit portion on that. The income limit comes off as well. So in two years, it will be a, it, it potentially will be challenging for a lot of districts and we'll just have to wait and see what, what it looks like for us.
Here's a question. So West Salem has been compared to eight to 10 similar schools throughout the west, or throughout the Wisconsin state. Do we talk to them and how they're handling these budgetary concerns? Like, do we talk to them and, and understand what strategic vision they're trying to create with all the things you just stated? I'd be curious to understand how they're handling this.
Sure. As you can, you can think we do have a lot of, we have a few different cohorts that are similar to us, such as Lodi and Evansville and St. Croix Central, who are all a part of this. And what I mean by that is groups that fall into the similar size. The only difference could be is if they have a private school system within their area, which could be different. They may not have one as much as we do here within the western portion of Wisconsin. But it is growing because if you look at a, I can bring a map in a future meeting on how that has grown, the, it kind of stops at Highway 10. As far as the number of private schools, they're lower than that. It seems like it's a very small number when you start getting northwise. But yep, we, we compare and look at challenges and figure out which ones are, what we're doing compared to them and how they handle it. But everybody's student population is a little bit different, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Board, do we have any other questions before we move on from item A? Okay, next up is workforce engagement and development. Bob?
Yeah, thanks. Most of this was closed session, so I'll keep it brief. But a week ago, the Workforce Engagement and Development Committee met with the West Salem Education Association along with Sean and Ryan and Crystal to discuss upcoming contract year concerns and requests. And I think we had a productive conversation. And we also kind of talked through, Ben, as you just asked, some, some peer districts and what their models look like and, and various implications of, of the, the different percentages and things like that. So where we left that was a, another meeting next Monday to kind of further just continue discussions and give the, give the team time to kind of think through some scenarios and things like that. So I will say the two groups are not very far off, I don't believe. Anything to add from Sean or Ryan?
I think that was a good update. Anyone have, have any questions? Okay, next section, connection with the community. And item A is our board reports. Zeke?
Thank you. So with the summer being here, there's not a ton that students are doing, but there's two really big things I want to touch on that Mr. Rupert touched on earlier. And that being, I think the biggest thing is girl soccer. So the biggest thing that's happened since this past girl, since this past board meeting has been the girls, the girls team making it to state. And this is such a big deal because this is the very first state appearance in program history. So this is really awesome. I was able to go to the game in Milwaukee and see everything and it was a really cool experience to support the girls in that way. And although they ended up losing their first game to Catholic Memorial, it was a very monumental season for the program. And then the second thing I really want to touch on is the summer musical. This year's musical was Descendants and Ms. Hanson was lucky enough to put together two casts and these two casts had four, four shows all together. I was able to go to the show on the 12th and I thought the performance was great. I enjoyed many aspects of it. And then some other things that the student body is up to is the cat program, whether that be with team lifts. I know the football team is like a lift at like 6:00 AM every morning, so that must be pretty brutal for them. Or individual ways to do that. And there's also the summer baseball through the Legion, so lots of students are doing that as well. And then the last thing I want to touch on today is Megan Johnson played in the softball All-Star Game this past Tuesday. So she had an incredible season as a softball. And yeah, so that is everything I have today. You guys have any questions for me? No? All right.
I think so. Anyone else?
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Zeke. Next is correspondence. We have a couple of things in the folder tonight. The first is a thank you from Tom Stenberg. It says, Dear West Salem Board of Education, thank you for the very generous college career and life-ready scholarship. I had so much fun making my video. It was a great idea. Thank you again for your generosity and help towards my future. I really appreciate it. And the other is a thank you from the family of Ken Carpenter. Says, West Salem Board and Administration, thank you for your kind condolences and beautiful plant during this difficult time. My family and I appreciate your kindness and support as we grieve the loss of my grandpa. And that is all ahead in correspondence. Next up is public comment at board meetings, per board policy 167.3. Jen, do we have anyone? Negative. All right, moving on to our consent agenda. That's going to include minutes of the regular board meeting of June 9th, 2025, and our special board meeting of June 16th, 2025, our invoices to be paid and donations, which we have two tonight. We have awarded scholarships was donated $7,000 and received from James Michelson. And Kate Olson donated $10 to the nutritional services Jane Doe Fund. Would anyone like to approve the consent?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. We'll keep going. Next up is to discuss, consider and take action if appropriate regarding strategic initiatives. Item A is our co-curricular contract addition to add a fall and winter dance assistant, dance coach, dance coach and assistant cross-country coach. And it says, add health occupation student association advisor and trap team assistant
These can be found on page 23 in your packet. And I guess if you have any questions or if Justin wants to say anything, because this is a high school item, I will turn it over to him where you can ask him or he can explain where these are going or where they've come from.
I'd be happy to clarify or answer any questions from the board.
So seeing that we're moving the cheerleading contract essentially to split between fall and winter dance, is the, the numbers of students in dance support having that assistant in those positions?
Yeah, I think it's, it's also about the flexibility in the, in the coaching season, I guess. They basically start once the school year ends to provide instruction and preparation of their competition season. So this provides a little more flexibility for coaches to be present at the, at the practices both in the summer and during the school year.
I just had a comment, I guess. Thank you, Justin, for continuing to make positions for things that typically have relied on volunteer support. I just, I think it's showing a support for a lot of the programs that, you know, responding to student demand and, you know, helping out some of our dedicated volunteers.
I think it's important to note on these as well, just with these changes, really it's not an addition to anything within the district. It's just moving things from one place to another where when there's programs that currently aren't being utilized or used, well, there's one, the cross-country is an addition just because of the boys remaining in Division Two and the girls being in Division Three. And you could read that explanation there. But then when you look at the health occupation student advisor and the trap team assistant, the other proposal in there, it's just moving them from programs that aren't being used into programs that are well attended and, and being used by our, our students currently.
A motion to approve, I guess, if there's no other comments.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there questions or any additional discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes and we move on to item B, approval of Damian Miller baseball field lease. That's attachment G in your packet.
What you can see on page 25, the current lease that we have with the village for Damian Miller Field is set to expire here at the end of the month. The last time that this agreement was put to the board was roughly 12 years ago, October 13th, 2013, as you can see in the top paragraph of this lease agreement. I know that I've been working in partnership with Teresa DeLonge as well as sharing this with Sean and our athletic department and running it through our insurance provider as well to make sure that everything within this lease agreement leaves, you know, essentially it, just making sure that it's going to remain the same as it's remained for the past 10 years. It's a good opportunity for us. It's a good exchange back and forth for us. Essentially, we maintain the field and the lease agreements for like a dollar. So it's a push. Part of it is that we do, as a district, we do ensure the baseball field, so the dugouts, the bleachers, the concession stand that we house our equipment in, those are insured by the district. But this has gone through the village's legal representation as well as our insurance representation. And so what we're providing here is just an extension of the current lease agreement that we have with the village for that baseball field. And on page 30, if anyone was curious, you can see where the lines are of what is essentially village property and then what is the property or the leased property of our school district. So obviously everything, the lion shelter, the current batting cage structures that are in there, that parking lot that gets utilized by the auctioneer and that gets used for when there are events on the baseball field, that's all village property, as well as the area in which it's a storage shed realistically for the village, along with where the Legion comes to do the cooking and frying for the concessions for that concession stand that falls within our portion of that lease agreement.
I do have a question. You said the village attorney looked at it. Did, did the school district's attorney look at it or just our insurance?
Our insurance went through it as far as, because we've spent some time on this here in the last handful of years, just with the storm from 2023 and what needs to cover. And our insurance provider was there. And through the talk with our insurance provider and the back and forth, we feel like this is a, a safe and a good position for the district to remain in. we feel like this is a, a safe and a good position for the district to remain in.
Were there any substantial changes from the last lease to this one? Okay.
No, there wasn't. I, I have the red line copy here and it's, there was basically nothing. What the thing that was taking out, taken out in the very first section was a bunch of measurements essentially, as far as like seventy feet north and thence eight feet to the west and essentially giving like a GPS location for those things, so.
I'll make a motion.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the Damian Miller baseball field lease.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve Damian Miller baseball field lease. Any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes.
Okay, so with that then, before Caitlin, before you and Catherine leave this evening, we do have a clean copy. If we can get your signature on that, then I can get that over to the village. That'd be much appreciated.
Sounds good. Next up is item C, approval of budgetment, budget adjustments for twenty-four, twenty-five. It looks like a short list on attachment H. This is pretty standard this time of year, but Sean, go ahead, give your spiel.
Go ahead. Yep, thank you very much. This is the time of year that we kind of do the wrap-up of twenty-four, twenty-five or the fiscal year because we're coming close to June thirtieth. What this is, and this is for some of the new board members, is throughout the year, there'll be potential changes within our budget. And the ones that matter the most when you need to have board approval is when you're moving from function to function. And what I mean by that is if you look in the account code section, you'll see a two-two versus a two-three. If it stays within that same function, it can be moved within itself. But if you're bringing it outside of those functions, it needs to be approved by the board itself because you're taking it from an instructional process to either general administration or a different function within the rule. So DPI has you, has the board approve those changes. And also, if we have any increases in revenue, that would, that would account to or would make a substantial change to your budget. These things could be adjusted as well. And so you'll see that there's three of them. So you had a corresponding for the first two, there's a three hundred and ninety thousand dollar change in compensation fixed assets and a one point three nine five million dollar increase in long-term obligations. And you'll see a corresponding expenditure where it's going. This is related to the Apple Financial Services contract that we entered into to change out our iPads and computers for, for the upcoming year. And Craig's behind me in case I have it, if you have any additional questions in regards to this. But this is to bring on the new contract for the upcoming four years. So when you enter into that within the fiscal year, you have to add this portion of it within your current budget. So it's an increase in revenue and an increase in expense portion of it. The other portion of the three hundred and ninety thousand is related to the sale of the current computers and the current iPads that we're going to return back. Now, three hundred and ninety thousand is, seems like quite a bit, but that's a percentage of, potentially of what we may receive. We're anticipating the high end was about five hundred thousand. But some of these are going to go back and they're going to be graded at different levels, which they could be either an A or an F. So it'll, they'll take off a certain percentage based on what the piece of equipment looks like and the condition of it. So we're anticipating getting back about seventy-six percent of the funding that we currently are, are, are promised. So that's kind of how that portion of it is. And with the expenditure side of it is, it's going to relate to some of the activities that to get the new iPads up and rolling for the new school year is what some of the expenses are. And also some of the cases that we purchased, which is be included in that. So there's an offsetting expense. Not sure how much that's going to be at this point, but it's, it's going to be close to the three ninety. So that would be the offset. The other portion that you see in the expenditure that was moving from account code two-two-two to two-three is about eleven thousand five hundred. That's related to our legal fees. And I can have Ryan talk about that if we need to. But this year was a, a challenging year with our legal fees as far as what we needed our legal department to help us with within the school year. So that was a bigger increase within the general administration side. So we had some savings within the function code and the instructional staff services that offset that portion. Are there any questions?
That Apple device cost, is that a recurring expense every year then, Sean? Or is that every four?
No, that's every four years. I mean, we make a lease payment of about three hundred and ninety-five thousand, but that one point four million is the cost of all of the equipment. So when you sign your contract, you have to recognize that within the year you purchase it. So that's a one-time. But your current expenditure next year will be just the lease process of about three point, three hundred and ninety-five, or three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
Do you know what that cost is per device? I'm just curious.
Yeah.
To compare to like what we have.
Yep.
Because I'm familiar with what our cost is at work for Dell computers.
Sure, sure.
I would be really curious of what that is. Because I would expect some type of discount based off of volume.
Sure, yep.
Just curious.
Yeah, we can get that for you. I don't know if Craig knows that offhand, but I can provide that for you, Ben.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to compare that to other devices. I mean, I'm more on the corporate side, but I'm assuming other schools have similar plans they do with, with Apple, for example.
Yep, and we do the majority of our computers with Apple. There's still some platform desktop ones that are still provided by the school district, but not as many as the other portion that the students have and, and folks have.
And last question, I assume we end up looking at other alternatives like Chromebooks or, and, and maybe my question is, why do we choose Apple? And maybe not some of these other alternatives?
Yep, great question. Can I turn that over to Craig? He, he would be able to know.
Thank you, Craig. Because there's definitely, Apple's a premium brand, right? So when I see a million dollars, how much are we paying for the brand as opposed to maybe what alternatives are out there?
So there's multiple reasons. I would say the two biggest reasons that we chose Apple is number one, all of our students and staff are very familiar with them. They seem to work really well in our district. Actually, I'll make it three reasons. The second one is that three hundred and ninety thousand dollars that Sean would talk about would essentially be almost zero with PCs and Chromebooks because they effectively wear out after that amount of time. So the, this resale as well as the one four years ago, those are the two I can speak to that I've been involved in. Actually, I saw the numbers from the one before that as well. They equate to, you know, thirty-five-ish percent back of your fleet, which is effectively one lease payment for the, you know, twenty-five percent of the next fleet, which is kind of what it's been. The third reason is, I, I actually heard you talk about being in a corporate environment. This is my eighth year here. Before that, that's all I did. And I was pleasantly surprised to find out how durable and how much our support goes down with dealing with an Apple environment. So I would say those are the three biggest reasons that we stuck. But we, we do always look at all three options out there.
That's perfect. Yeah, for, I have three kids that have used these. I'm impressed that they don't break. I mean, they literally lasted the entire year for all our kids.
Yeah.
In fact, I don't remember ever them breaking. So, thank you. That was great.
All right, thanks. Any other questions on the proposed or the budget changes? Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? Last call. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion's carried. Next is our list of to-do items and information requests on attachment I. See, there's some changes here, Ryan. Do you want to walk us through that? And then, Board, if you can let us know if there's anything that you want to have added.
Yep, we have started the, I believe, the person that we're working with, Dave, from our, for our community, our communication audit, I should say, has started already. I know that he's spoken to a couple of people. I have an appointment with him on Wednesday. But with that starting to move forward, obviously, the first one about Communication Development Committee, I'm taking that off of there because that's in progress. One thing I'd like to ask and bring the board's attention to is the link for that Google form. As far, as far as creating collective commitments with our, with our group, there's, you know, four to six very simple questions there. If you just want to take some time, we'll utilize that for when we get to our board retreat. Took off the policy one forty-two point five for filling a board vacancy because we took care of that on this past Monday. And want to welcome Bob Menard back to our school board. I did add on there due to conversations that occurred during that meeting, looking at adding a tie-break criteria, something other than a coin flip to that policy. So we'll continue to work on that. And then when I come to the policy committee here, probably within the next month with the policy updates, we'll throw that one in there as well. And then, you know, as we get to the end of a fiscal year and we look at what we spend, I think one of the things that I'm going to spend some time here talking with Sean about is just the utilization of our fund eighty dollars. You know, those essentially have remained pretty steady here over a long course of time. And remember, those fund eighty dollars are the community service type dollars in which we use. For example, that goes to keeping the pool up to date, things like that. I know there's other districts that utilize those fund eighty dollars for a number of different things. But I want to have a further conversation with Sean and then bring, bring back to the board at some time for a board development of some things that we could utilize some of that money for. And maybe it's time to look at, do we need to increase that fund a little bit more due to inflationary costs and other needs that we have across the district? I think it, as us being a community partner, with our district essentially being the hub for all community activities, I think that's some, that'd be a good conversation topic. So I added that on here for this month as well.
Okay, sounds good to me. Board, is there anything else that we want to have added or any questions on what's here? All right, that is the last thing we have on our list. So we'll end our live stream and we can adjourn if someone like to make a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Thanks, Trish. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks for adjourned.